Yeah, it's very stressful. But also crazy, I just, I feel like this school has just been flying so fast.
I don't know.
Right?
I'm not sure.
Wow. Yeah, people always think about Christmas, so. I mean, I just.
I don't know. 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 I don't know.
Yeah, I'm. I'm in need of nice hot chocolate right now, it's so cold out.
Um.
So. Is everyone on the topic for the year?
Um, no, we all feel like I'm congested. It's like, it's coming. It was, I don't know. No, it was actually like, it was pretty, you know, everything I thought you were listening to.
I put you in there, you know, in the past. We don't have to do that. We don't have to do it. My niece was only a year and a half on the phone. And, um, she said, I was worried, so I was like, so she's great. So, maybe she's, maybe she's, maybe she's hurt, right? But, I don't know, I'm trying to, I'm not gonna be able to sort of, sort of, all the time. I'm just making sure, oh, wait, I'm gonna, she's only a year and a half before. Um, she's. She's coming here, so I don't know. I don't know. Do you think they're in there?
So in terms of the summary for achievement, what we want you to know, so in the next twenty-eight slides or so, you're going to see lots of charts and lots of graphs, and sometimes those can seem overwhelming. So what this slide, what we're hoping to do is to give you some highlights of some of the things that we hope to highlight in those charts and graphs. So what you're going to see that in terms of achievement, how we compare to the standards, we're above the state average. So you're going to see a range of twelve percent to nineteen percent, where we fall above the state average in English Language Arts, Math and Science. You're going to see some increase in most grades in English Language Arts and Math. We have had a dip in third and fifth grade, and we've also seen a decrease in our science that we're going to share with you. We're going to talk to you about the opportunity gaps that exist, but we're also going to show you some of the ways that we are achieving, that we are closing some of those achievement gaps. In terms of growth, we want you to see that we've had typical growth from most of our grades in English Language Arts and Math. We're really proud and happy to share with you that we've had high growth in seventh grade in English Language Arts and seventh grade in Math. We've had increased growth in our sixth and tenth grade, and that all of our subgroups are showing typical growth. It's important to know that when the state is giving us some of our accountability ratings, they look at things other than just the test itself. So there are additional accountability indicators. So when we start talking about our progress towards our targets, it's important to know when you're looking at the district's overall percentage, things that are also included in that are our attendance rating. And so you're going to see that we've had an improvement in our attendance across all of our grades. But also included in that, data that's included in that percentage rating is our students who are completing, taking and completing advanced course placement, and we have seen a decrease in that. Next slide. So I'm going to turn it over to Cara Larkov now, who's going to talk you through the achievement and growth slides.
Okay, thanks, Pam. Excuse me, it was my voice. So we're going to start off with the R E L A data. Okay. And so in the slide again, there's a lot of information here, so I'll try to walk you through it. This is showing our achievement level for grades three through eight as an aggregate, as well as grade ten, and our comparison in the state and how our students fared whether they were not meeting, partially meeting, meeting or exceeding. And so you can see when you compare the top two bars, we were twelve percent higher than the state and the percentage of students who were meeting or exceeding across grades three through eight, and again, twelve percent across our 10th grade students who took the E L A test compared to those two.
Yeah, sorry I interrupted. Just to, oh, please go back, just so that I have the context correct. So this is, the top line is North Andover against a state-established standard, right?
Against all of the other students in the state. So the average, the nineteen percent of all students in the state fell not meeting. For our students, it was eleven percent were not meeting.
Okay, so the second, the second row is all of the state, all students in the state average. But what I'm asking is, this is percent, or this is the percent of people that are exceeding an achievement level. The achievement level is set by the state, right? What that level is. Well, that's what they expect a student to score at that level of education, right?
Each student receives a scaled score, and then there's ranges of what scaled score determines whether they're not meeting, partially meeting, meeting. So meeting is a five hundred, I believe.
Okay.
They changed it again, right?
And then it, I believe, yeah, so that there's the five hundred. There's also, one of the kind of moving targets in a way has been the competency determination. So even though four percent of our students were not meeting for the high school, it might be that they earned a scaled score that still did qualify them for, to earn their diploma in competency determination. So there's a, there's a lot of numbers within.
I get that. I'm just trying to, so my related question to that is when the state sets the expectation level, so does that, does that get reevaluated every year? Do they set new levels, or does it like a level that they set twenty years ago? Do you see what I'm saying?
So I can fill you in on this. So, you know, the state has to look each year at how many are meeting and exceeding, and so there's been different changes, right? So, you know, they went to Park, and not many schools were still taking the MCAS, and that played a role. The last test that was a regular, which was the new MCAS, was twenty eighteen, and then twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen was the last MCAS that was administered prior to COVID, and so COVID threw that off. So what they're saying is the twenty twenty-three data is the new baseline, and they're looking back to twenty twenty-two. So in terms of the average, Dave, it may be adjusted each year because they do look at, like, setting a new baseline now.
That's what my, so my question was, so they do reset what the expectation is, right, that we're measuring against. It's current, it's not over.
To determine what that.
That was the fundamental thing. Okay, sorry to interrupt, because I need to understand what these graphs are showing me.
Absolutely.
Just to piggyback off, as I hope that are understanding, too, that that benchmark, does that typically go up, go down, vary? Like, how do we know how, which way that's shifting?
What these graphs are showing you are the standards. So this is where our students are meeting, if our students are meeting the standards set by the state. We'll be talking to you about our progress towards targets that the state sets for us. That's something a little bit different. But so what we're trying to show you here in these graphs are the percent of our students who are meeting the standards and exceeding the standards.
And so what I'd say is, like, so a little bit to understand, when the MCAS first came out, for example, we were the number one state in the, in the country for education, yet half of our students in grades three to eight were not meeting or exceeding the standards. And that was, that was about half. And now, as you can see, in the recovery path after the pandemic, you see that it looks like, it looks like fifty-six, is that the first one, fifty-four percent are not, no, I'm saying if you take the state average, right? It was about half that first year before COVID, and we were the number one state. And what I was only saying that because it looks like that's increased, so the thirty-nine and the ninety, fifty-eight percent of not in the state are not meeting or exceeding the standards.
Right, but does that benchmark move of how many, you know, like, say, oh, you know, I'm going to say ninety-one isn't, one is an A, but now I'm going to say seventy-nine is an A. How much does that shift?
Well, even, I shared some MCAS data with the high school group leadership team because the, what that scaled score, the competency determination and the scaled score has shifted. They've actually increased that, that target. So I wouldn't, I think we're still looking at our students compared to the standard. So how well have they done? How many questions have they answered correctly? I can't think of the.
Right, that's what these, that's what these graphs are showing you, how many answers they have, they answered correctly.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks. Keep going, please.
It is complex. Guys, these are actually really, these are really great questions.
Sometimes you're going to, like, dig out the information.
I was going to say, too, we have thirty slides, and if you could write the questions you have, we're trying to hold questions to the.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Sometimes it might help the audience.
But this helps us to understand the data.
Right.
Right, that we're about to hear, right? And we're educators.
So in this slide, again, we're still looking at the English Language Arts, but broken down across all our grade levels, three through ten. And so you can see, even though our aggregate, aggregate was in one place, we see across all of the grade levels, we are fifty percent or more are meeting and exceeding the standard at each grade level. So you'll notice in grade five, we only had three percent were exceeding. It also happens to be a grade level where we only had seven percent. It's one of our lowest not meeting. So kind of the middle range in fifth grade is a little bit larger than the, the two ends. So the data varies a little bit across those different grade levels. This slide is showing the comparison of our twenty twenty-two percent of students meeting and exceeding the E L A MCAS compared to the twenty twenty-three data. And what I'll point out is that in most grades, we had an increase in the percentage of students who were meeting and exceeding. However, as Pam mentioned, in grades three and grade five, we did have a decrease in those two grades. We'll see in a little bit, we'll talk about the, this student growth percentile that really kind of compares the, a cohort to another. So this is really comparing two different groups of students at that same grade level. So this is our data in math. Again, similar that we are above the state for grades three through eight combined. We were nineteen percent higher than the number of students who were meeting and exceeding, and in grade ten, we're thirteen percent above the state. And again, broken down by grade level, you see some similar trends there, including our fifth grade, again, with those, those kind of more students falling in the middle ranges, five percent and seven percent, but pretty, pretty consistently over fiftieth percent meeting. You'll see some, some bigger gains in fourth grade, seventh grade and tenth grade. And again, that comparison of twenty-two data to twenty twenty-three data, we again see across our grade levels increases in the percentage of students meeting and exceeding, except for in grades three and five. When we look at our, excuse me, our science MCAS, students only take science MCAS in fifth grade, eighth grade, and then once in high school. Our fifth grade and eighth grade MCAS covers all domains of science. And then at high school, they take one subject, and we happen to have our students in ninth grade take the biology MCAS. So they get that out of the way in ninth grade, and then they take E L A and math in 10th grade. And you'll notice, again, we have that, that twelve or thirteen percentage of students meeting and exceeding compared to the state in less than the not meeting side. When we look at our comparison from year to year, it is sort of disappointing that we did have a decrease. We're digging into the data to kind of look at some of the factors that might contribute to that, but we did have a decrease in all three of those compared to twenty twenty-two data. Our student growth percentile, so this is where we can look at achievement over time of how are our students growing each year. And so they use a cohort model. So we look at a student, let's say a student in fourth grade, how they did on MCAS, and then comparing to how they did in fifth grade on MCAS. And so they're compared to students who had a similar score on the MCAS the prior, the prior time they took it. So fourth through eight, it was how they did in third through seventh compared to peers that had that same score. And then our 10th grade E L A and math, it's compared to how they did in eighth grade. And so there's ranges of what that growth is. So the student growth percentile, if they fall between the forty and fifty-ninth percentile, that's our typical growth range. So on the next slide, you'll see for both E L A and math, the comparison of both twenty twenty-two data and twenty twenty-three data, and you can see those bands. So again, ideally, we want to fall at least in that typical growth and that green band. And we see that for our twenty twenty-three MCAS in both subjects in all grades, we did fall in the, all, all groups fell above that fortieth average student growth percentile. And then our seventh grade, both in E L A and math, fell in the high growth percentile. And we did have to point out, 10th grade math had a nice increase from thirty-ninth, an SGP of thirty-nine to fifty-seven last year. And there was some movement in the sixth grade E L A as well.
Excellent. So Cara went over the achievement, which is the, you know, students compared to the standard, and the growth, which is the students compared to similar students who performed similarly the year before. My job is to break, to show you some graphs by subgroup. And so this idea that, so if you show, we look at blue, the top two graphs, if we look at blue, those are our scores last year, red are our scores this year. Top is meeting and exceeding. So you see all students, you see high needs, low income, students with disabilities, Hispanic, Latino and our white students. And as you can see, there are some opportunity gaps that exist between some of our subgroups and our aggregate.
Can I just ask a quick question? And I'm just trying to remember. So this is the class of twenty-two, and they were, I'm just thinking back to the COVID years, that they were in school the full year. Prior to that, they were hybrid and all that. So this is the last, this is the first full year back, right? Am I saying that correctly? Okay, all right. Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to put it into some context here. Okay, sorry.
Students who took it online remotely and, yes, and were in hybrid.
They were in for the full year. Okay.
That's the twenty-two.
The twenty-two bar, yeah. Okay, all right, sorry. Thank you.
No, thank you. And as you can see in the top two graphs, in both E L A and math, we have some, some increases across most of our subgroups, but there's a large difference in the success that some students are finding in our schools than others. Down at the bottom, we see average growth percentile for both E L A and math. Again, we have students in that typical growth range between about forty and sixty. All of our subgroups made typical growth across all, both E L A and math. Here are our high school numbers. Again, we see blue being twenty twenty-two, red being twenty twenty-three. Last year, we see our differences between all students, high needs, low income, students with disabilities, Hispanic, Latino and white. We see some increases in most subgroups, but also large differences between all students or our white students and some of our subgroups. Down below, again, we have students' growth percentile, grade ten. We see increases across all subgroups in grade ten in that, in that typical growth Here is our subgroup achievement in Science, Technology and Engineering. We don't have growth scores, and the D E S C doesn't calculate growth scores for Science, Technology and Engineering. But here we are with our aggregate compared to our subgroups in both, in fifth grade, eighth grade and 10th grade, as you can see.
Okay, so now we're going to move into accountability. I'm going to try to walk you through this a little bit, and this might help explain sort of where, how we got to two thousand and twenty-three and what happened during the pandemic. So every year, the Department of Education and Secondary, Elementary and Secondary Education uses MCAS scores and other indicators to help us determine how to hold schools and districts accountable for their student learning. We had disruption in learning, as we all know, due to the pandemic, and we had modifications to MCAS in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And then in twenty twenty-two, they petitioned to the Department of Education to modify the accountability system for reporting. All the indicators were provided, but there was no accountability determination for districts in twenty twenty-two. So this year, twenty twenty-three results. This is the first time that we have returned to a full accountability system. It's the first time since two thousand and nineteen. So what that chart shows you is just sort of a visual to show you that in two thousand and nineteen, the state was looking at accountability percentile and progress towards targets, targets. And in two thousand and twenty-three, we're back to looking at a full accountability system. So there was some disruption. When you look at your school, when we look at individual school profiles, individual school profiles will receive two types of accountability reports. They're going to receive a school accountability percentile, which measures the performance of all the students in the school compared to other schools in the state. And that's reported in a percentile from one to ninety-nine. All schools are also going to receive a progress towards improvement and their targets. This is a measure that the district or the school, it measures their progress towards the improvement targets, and it's reported as a percentage. These achievement targets are set by the state based on prior year's data. Now, this is where it gets a little wonky, because it's tricky, because the last time we did this is two thousand and nineteen. So what the state did is they are comparing two thousand twenty-two data to two thousand and nineteen, because that's the last time that we had full accountability reporting. And what they decided to do was to assign a path. So in two thousand and twenty-two, all of our subgroups were assigned a path, either the recovery path or the path forward. To be on a recovery path, in two thousand and twenty, they looked at the two twenty, two thousand twenty-two achievement, and if it was less than two thousand and nineteen achievement, that subgroup was put on the recovery path. In two thousand and twenty-two, if their achievement was greater than or equal to two thousand and nineteen, they were put on the path forward. This happened for each of the subgroups in the content areas. So a school could be working in paths forward and in recovery paths within a content area based on the subgroups within their building. And so that's, yeah, right, it's tricky. I must have read this like twelve thousand times. I feel like I finally got it straight in my head. So in a minute, we're going to show you some, the data for each of the schools and for our district, but it's important to know where that information comes from. Okay.
Even though some of these students were probably not even in school at that time in twenty nineteen, right? I mean, some of these third grade students, for example, were not even in school.
Correct.
So it's measuring them against.
But they're measuring against third graders in two thousand and nineteen.
Nineteen. Okay, yeah. All right, okay. You said wonky.
Yeah, it's wonky, right?
All right.
Wonky's the best way to describe it. So what this chart shows you is all of the schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I think it's important to know that, like, lots of times, we want to say, we all want to be on the path forward. You mean, you think about moving forward as a success and recovery as you're recovering from something. But this chart will show you that most of the schools were on recovery paths. So non-high school, remember, is that three through eight, and then high school, obviously, we know what high school is. With the exception of science in the, in three through eight, the majority of schools are on a recovery path. Okay?
That's interesting.
Yeah, it's interesting to note, just because I think, you know, you'll see, if you dig deeper into North Andover's data, you will see that, you know, schools in E L A, some subgroups were on a recovery path and some are on a path forward. And you receive points for how you do on that, which determines whether or not we met our targets.
But it seems like so science was less, one conclusion one I might make from this is science was less impacted by the pandemic.
Right, or that the achievement was similar to two thousand and nineteen.
Hmm. Okay. I'm surprised by that, but okay.
Right. So what I just said to you a few minutes ago, that is, now, all the school profiles, the school profiles receive a school accountability percentile and a progress towards improvement. What this shows is the district's report card or the district's profile. A district only receives the progress towards improvement. So our district received fifty-four percent, which is considered substantial progress towards our targets. Okay, everybody still with me? Okay, great. I know, right? And that is made up from all of the schools, right? And so we were, we were assigned points. And then what this slide is also showing you is that all of our schools, or none of our schools are requiring assistance or intervention based on their scores. You can go to the next slide. So on this slide, what we're going to try to show you is the accountability percentile for our schools and their progress towards their targets. So we did go back to two thousand and eighteen, just so you have some reference points. But again, just sort of when you're looking at that slide, remember, two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-three are the two years that we had full accountability. And so the first group there shows our accountability percentile, which is one to ninety-nine, and then the second, or the last column shows our progress towards the targets for each of our schools, which is a percentile, towards meeting those targets. Can you go back to that one more second?
Can you go back?
Yeah. And so what, you know, you want to see here is that all of our, you know, we have some schools that fell in the moderate range in terms of meeting their targets. We had some schools that fell in a substantial. They made substantial progress towards meeting their targets, and we had a school that met their targets or exceeded their targets. I think it's important to look at that range, you know, so if you're looking at substantial progress, that's between fifty and seventy-four percent. So if you look at NAMs, for example, they had seventy-one percent towards, substantial towards meeting their progress, but they're very close to meeting, to meeting their targets. You look puzzled.
Not right now.
Okay.
Well, I am puzzled right now, but.
It's those, those progress towards the targets are all the different paths that the schools were on. So whether they were on the recovery path or the path forward, they would receive points, which determines their overall progress towards their targets. Okay. We can come back to that. So we tried to give you an example here of what that looks like. Let's get to mine for a second. So in our non-high school or our three through eight, if you're looking at English Language Arts achievement, this is overall for all students. We were on the recovery path as a district. We improved, but we were considered below target. But, you know, I want you to, so what I, what I want to share with you is in two thousand and twenty-two, we were four hundred and ninety-nine point three. In two thousand and twenty-three, it was five hundred and point three. Our target was five hundred and two point six. So we made improvements towards our target, but we're still considered.
Could you repeat those numbers? Because I know those targets, those progress targets are like.
Yeah. I like that.
They're really frustrating as an educator. When you see them, you're like, wait, but they made all this growth, but they didn't hit their progress target? So now we get no credit. What are you talking about?
Correct. Right. So it was four hundred and ninety-nine point three in two thousand and twenty-two, five hundred point three in two thousand and twenty-three. Our target was five hundred and two point six. And then if you look at English Language Arts for our high school, we were also on the recovery path. In two thousand and twenty-two, it was five hundred and seven point seven. In two thousand and twenty-three, it was five hundred and ten point five. The target was five hundred and nine point two. We exceeded our target.
What was the first one, twenty twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
What was the number?
Five hundred and seven point seven.
Five oh seven seven. But what, maybe I could save this for the end, but just understanding what the number means, what the.
I was going to ask how do they determine the target? So I think that's the same.
Same question, yeah.
Average scale.
Okay.
The average what?
Average scale.
Average scale score.
Average scale score, okay.
I'm not sure how they determine the target. We can find that out for you.
Yeah.
There's a multi-page document. I could not summarize it, but I can do some more digging. It, yeah.
Just run with the review.
Right, and these are.
Yeah, of course, I got nothing else.
And what we're showing you is all of our students. So if you drill down into the data, you have some subgroups that may have met their target. You have some subgroups that may have had no change. All of those are equated to a point system, and that's how they decide. The next chart, chart just shows you mathematics. So again, in our grades through eight, we were on a recovery path. We improved, but we did not hit our target. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, if you ask, so, but I can get them for you. And then in high school, again, we were on the recovery path and we had no change. So this slide is probably my favorite slide, and it's one I really want to highlight, and maybe one that perhaps, as I thought about this tonight, we could have started with. So one of the things, if you remember, I told you, one of the indicators towards our overall progress, hitting our targets or that percentile that the district receives, is absenteeism. So they look at chronic absenteeism, and North Andover exceeded their targets in both non-high school students grades and in our high school students. And I think this really tells the story, right? So if you look at two thousand and twenty-two, we had eleven point four percent of chronic absenteeism in our non-high school students. In two thousand and twenty-three, we had eight point seven percent. Our target was ten point four. So we had a change of two point seven. We exceeded our target for non-high school students. In high school, in two thousand and twenty-two, we had an absenteeism rate of twenty-two point three. Two thousand and twenty-three, we had seventeen point three. The target was twenty-one point seven with a six-point change, six-point difference, really exceeding the target. So for me, you know, when I look at this data, North Andover spent a lot of time, made a concentrated effort. What you see on the other, the right-hand side there is the attendance protocol that was put in place. So that means our counselors, our nurses, our administrators, our teachers, all had a consistent protocol in getting children to return back to school. So, yes, the parent liaisons. So we got the kids into the building where they weren't in the building. So for me, this is really good news, because it means our absenteeism is, is, is getting better. The kids are in school, and this will drive some of those other things that we just showed you. What's also really interesting to note here is that if you go and look at, drill down in this data, all of our subgroups exceeded their target, and some of those at rates like eleven and twelve percent of a decrease in chronic absenteeism. The state is really struggling with chronic absenteeism, and North Andover should be really proud that every subgroup exceeded their targets in terms of coming back to school and getting kids in school. And that is really going to help us do the work that we need to do that we showed you in some of those other targets.
Historically, have the numbers been similar to this? Do you know?
I don't, I'd have to go back.
Ten years ago, before COVID.
Yeah, I could go back and look and see, but I think that.
So typically, we've had about, you know, ninety-five percent or higher attendance rate. COVID definitely impacted chronic absenteeism across, in North Andover and across the state of Massachusetts, in the MASC, in Boston Globe, you name the article, chronic absenteeism is the top priority of the commissioner right now, because it's still an issue. And not to pat ourselves on the back, but like, I think, you know, no one had a crystal ball, but when we thought about that recovery money, from the free cash to the grants to the but when we thought about that recovery money, from the free cash to the grants, to the, uh, two big budget operating increases, the addition of counselors, the addition of the bilingual parent liaisons, you know, us formalizing our protocol, and make no mistake about it, you throw in the nurses as well, and Cheryl Bazak, and Officer Tracy, the attendance officer, that combination, along with the student assistance teams, I, I was gonna say, that makes a difference, because districts aren't seeing this.
Districts are not seeing this, and, you know, I think it also speaks to putting a plan in place. I mean, I wasn't here, but this is really a well-thought-out attendance protocol that was put in place to get the students in, you can't teach them if they're not here, right? And we want to have our kids in the building, and that's what the principals and the counselors, you know, we're continuing to follow this protocol and continuing to have our kids be present in school so that we can work on some of the other things. So that's why I said sometimes I wish, this could have been a slide we'd led with, because it makes, helps understand the other slides a little bit.
Well, you're flipping it, I have to give credit where it's due to. Lorraine Marsh was a big push on this, form assistance.
And then this slide is another one that we talked about. It's an indicator that goes towards our overall progress, and this is advanced coursework. So it, we're looking at the percent of students who are enrolled in eleventh and twelfth grade that complete at least one advanced course. Students can take as many courses, advanced courses, as they want, but they're only counted once. Things that are included in advanced course or advanced placement courses, Project Lead the Way, and any math course that's above Algebra II. Now, this chart looks a little bit different, and we did that on purpose, because while if we showed you all students, we would have shown, we will show and does show that we declined in that area. But I think it's important to notice that our two thousand and twenty-three rate of all students that are taking advanced placement courses is sixty-seven point eight. So while we did decline, we certainly have a high number of students that are participating in advanced courses. And then, you know, continuing to look at that chart, if you look at our high-need students, we increased from two thousand and twenty-two. If you look at our low-income students, we increased from two thousand and twenty-two. And you look at Hispanic and Latino students, we increased from two thousand and twenty-two. And if you remember, we talked about opportunity gaps and closing those achievement gaps and giving, you know, having all of our students be able to participate. This is also something that, while it doesn't show maybe, you know, sometimes it's really hard to see the word decline, that's why you have to drill down into the data a little bit, and that one thing doesn't, you know, one single piece of data doesn't tell the whole story. All right, so what are our next steps? Or what are our responses to some of the data that you've seen here tonight? We're going to continue to focus on attendance, getting kids to school is the best way to teach them. Our, as a district, district leaders and as schoolhouse leaders, we will examine, they'll do, we'll do item analysis to determine areas of support within the schoolhouse. We are going to continue to implement high-quality instructional materials, as Dr. Gilgan shared with you in his superintendent goals. We are expecting a hundred percent implementation of wit and wisdom. We have lots of professional development that's going on this year. We have a principal learning arc, and that's really focusing on high-quality instructional materials. So all of our principals from pre-K to twelve meet with Kristen and I every other Monday, examining high-quality instructional materials, looking at how you, um, visit classrooms, how you determine if high-quality instructional materials are being taught in the classroom. We're looking at student rubric, looking at rubrics for determining that, that was also part of the superintendent's goals. We are doing a reboot of foundations training. So right now, we have foundations, which is our phonics program, and K to two, a pre-K to two. And we are increasing that to grade three this year, and we're doing a overall reboot for all of them. So our training is set to start next Monday. So for our first group is grade three, they haven't had the phonics program before, so they'll receive the materials and their training. And then we're also going to be training pre-K, K one and two again. You know, although all of our, many of our teachers have been trained, we've had new teachers we brought into the district, and we think it's important that we make sure that we are all understanding how to teach that material, and then making sure that we're providing the materials that our teachers need. We're going to upgrade our DIBELS eight to M-class. So M-class is a software piece that integrates with DIBELS eight. It's really on-demand, so what, we have been using the paper pencil, DIBELS probes, which takes time to score. So the M-class is digitized, so it'll be on-demand scoring. It will, it will help us to be able to determine groups for regular instruction. We'll put students in those, look at those sort of one-minute probes, it'll put students into group, whole-class lessons, individual lessons, and then intervention groups. And that, we are slated to start, so we just finished one round, this administration of DIBELS, and then in our December testing period, we will upgrade to the M-class system. We have a focus on math, so we are going to start our review of mathematics. So we are currently using Eureka in K to five. Eureka was adopted in North Andover in two thousand and seventeen, so it's time to take a look at that, to do a comprehensive review of our program. We'll follow the DESI protocol, much like we did for ELA when we chose wit and wisdom, but we're in the process of forming that right now. We have map assessment data, which we have always had in K to eight, but this year, those of you who have children in the schools, you should have received your parent reports for map assessment. And we have, our, our teachers are prepared to speak to parents during their conference times about what that looks like, but also, you know, really sharing with parents the data about their children. What's not on there is we'll also be doing that for DIBELS or our early literacy screener this year as, as well. And then we have Facing History and Ourselves Professional Development in grades six through twelve. We're doing a, like a train-the-trainer model, so we did training of our leaders last October eighteenth, and then they will be leading the professional development for their colleagues in November. And we are participating, well, Kara has applied, Kara Lockham applied, and has become an ambassador for the Science Performance Assessment for six through eight, so we're really excited. She's going to go to two days of training on the new assessment, and then she's going to bring back and train our teachers about the Science Performance Assessments. So we were excited that Kara was accepted into that cohort. We have data analysis work that we're continuing to do with the Lynch Leadership Academy. I think this is our third year working with the Lynch Leadership Academy. We've moved from large group meetings to really drilling down into the data, looking at some of our subgroups. And our consultant from Lynch Leadership Academy is meeting one-on-one with our principals to do data walks within the buildings and work in a coaching capacity that way. We're going to continue to support pathways for advanced coursework. You know, when you look at that part about the indicator in terms of AP classes or advanced coursework, I mean, sometimes we ask, well, why did that take a dip? You know, not all colleges are putting the same weight into AP courses as they did before. We did just come out of two years of a pandemic, where students are getting their feet back out underneath them. You know, maybe perhaps they weren't as driven to take some of those courses. Maybe there were some courses that they were looking for their passion. And as I said, the colleges aren't necessarily looking, putting as much weight into that. But we will continue to support the pathways, and then I think in the beginning of the year, we talked to you about the calculus project, and we're really excited for that work. As you know, we're undergoing, undergoing a special education review right now, and that will certainly help drive some of the things that we might need to do in the district. And the next time that the school committee meets on November sixteenth, our building leaders will be here to share with you their school improvement plans. And we have redesigned school improvement plans this year, so that our, each of our levels are looking at a goal, why they chose that goal, and the data that supports the reason for picking that goal, and then the indicators to how they're going to achieve that goal, and how they'll know that that has happened. That's when they will probably, they will be drilling down into their MCAS, specific by school, a little bit more, to be able to address some of those specific needs, and they'll present that to you the next time we meet.
Are they picking their goals, or are you guiding them in what their goal?
I think there's a combination there. And so what we, we have, we've met several times, some of the work we've done in our principal learning arc or in the meetings that Dr. Gilligan holds with our principals is to really think about. So what our goal is, is to look at the strategic plan, and so that your strategic plan is driving your school improvement plan, your school improvement plan is driving your teacher-student goals and professional practice goals. But then there's also, you know, a school improvement plan can be school-specific, so there may be something that's very specific to an individual school. I think what you're going to see is that our elementary principals are working very closely, so they'll have probably three very similar goals in terms of curriculum, and they may have an individual goal specific to their building. And then our middle and high school also have a shared goal, because they're working on Facing History and Ourselves together, but then they have goals that are specific to their building. That's thirty slides. My work here is done.
Now Pam, I mean, we did a lot of dry runs with this, so. And it is, I, I will say that it's, it's, it's complex. The MCAS is complex, because it's so many factors that go into it. Cohorts change, like in growth, for example, it's based on at least two years' worth of data. But your cohorts are how similarly performing groups across the whole state of Massachusetts. And Kara is right, and she is the STEM director. So I'd probably let her explain the criterion, reference-based formula for achieving your performance targets. It's actually about a paragraph description of what it is and all the different factors, and that's a, looks like a pretty complex mathematical equation with all of that, so.
Yeah, and I want to thank Kara and Kristen and Ben, who couldn't be here, and our, you know, and all of our administrators. I think that North Andover has put a lot of, our directors have worked very hard to apply for grants, to be part of the high-quality instructional materials, to be ahead of the, be ahead of lots of districts in terms of addressing the science of reading. We had a review this week from a company that's working with us as we implement high-quality instructional materials. And even from the spring to now, there was lots of positive things that they've seen in our district, to the point where North Andover will be a place that they'll ask other people to come and see how well it's being done. There's really been some incredible work, and I'm just really proud and pleased to be able to work with these great directors. We're happy to answer questions, or if you have, you know, as you sit and think about this, certainly if you want to email things to us, if you want us to come back and try to answer anything else.
I have a quick one now, if I may.
Sure.
So on the, on the absenteeism thing?
Yes.
So I, I understand the improvement, and I see that, but I can't help but wonder. So this is the, the average percent of students that are missing on a given day? Is that what that number, what does that number mean? What does the percent number mean?
So it's the, so for example, most students are in our care for a hundred eighty days.
Right.
And so if a student has missed eighteen days or more, they're considered chronically absent. If they come in and out of the district, you know, maybe they move in partway through the year, so it's always looking at what ten percent of being absent, being absent for ten percent or more is considered chronic.
So, so, so these numbers, these percents that you quoted?
Mm-hmm.
Are the percent of students that are, that are chronically absent?
That are chronically absent, correct.
So, okay, so, so for example, in two thousand and twenty-two, you said twenty-two point three of percent of our high school students were chronically absent. That's just under a quarter of them. Okay, so I'm kind of shocked by that?
Yeah.
I mean, so I would expect to see that in graduation rates, right? If quarter of, roughly, a little less than a quarter of our students are chronically absent, how did they graduate? Because we didn't have a quarter of our students not graduate.
No, but I think the, I mean, this is one of the great work that educators do, is how do we support those students when they're absent? So if they are chronically absent, how are they? Just because they're absent doesn't mean they can't earn credit and, you know, complete work and meet the standards for earning grades.
And it's nine through twelve.
What, I'm sorry?
So it's the whole high school. It looks at nine through twelve.
No, I get that.
It's the entire high school.
Okay, that helps.
Not just the seniors.
Right, it's not just the seniors, oh, okay, okay.
But I also add this, you know, I think it's important to underscore, I mean, why it's such an issue in the state, is we still had people out with COVID, you know, that would be out for time.
Five days quarantine.
Yeah, five days quarantine, you know, and they'd still be working with folks. But more importantly, the level of students in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and across the country that needed mental health care skyrocketed.
Sure.
And so, you know, these, all the problems that existed pre-pandemic, they, they were the same problems, but the pandemic certainly exacerbated it. And, you know, it's, I think that's just important to know. I think that's, I think that's where you see it, and that's where, for example, like there, the chronically absent rate for a lot of, some of our local communities is sky-high, and it's the number one, it's the number one thing at the latest board meeting, or two board meetings ago, for Jeff Riley, the commissioner of education, to come out and say, this is what we got to tackle.
It helps a lot to understand, that's, first of all, it's across all four grades, sorry. Okay, it's not twenty-three percent of our seniors.
Yeah, when you look at class.
Yeah, 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 and secondly, you make the great point that it doesn't mean they're not ever doing the work. It's just that it's specifically absent for whatever reason.
Right.
Sometimes it could be, you know, they're, they broke their leg or whatever, right? Okay.
And when you look at the elementary, the non-high school, so this, when you look at non-high school, that is not just three through eight, that is pre-K, pre-K, oh, probably, is it pre-K? I'm not sure if they do pre-K, but pre-K through eight.
Through eight, yeah, okay. So the improvements are good, and the numbers are, when they, you first gave them, I'm like overwhelmed, but I, in context, I get it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Feel better. Does anybody else have any questions they want to ask?
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Since we're, we were just talking about attendance, I think it might be helpful to see previous-year averages. I feel like it will be a little bit different, but I think it might be helpful to us as a committee and a district to see previous years and what we're looking at here for twenty-two, twenty-three, and then our growth continuing, right? Because as our attendance improves, our growth should improve as well. And so it'd be nice to see that kind of laid out, and just, you know, we're going to all know, like, it's, it's pandemic, it's mental health, and it's, it's a burden on families, it's a burden on teachers, it's a burden on administration, it's a burden on students when they're not there and trying to make up the work. So the more that we can get them in, I, I do think that growth will show, and it would be nice to see it in some kind of display.
Pam, can I just add real quick?
Yeah, sure.
One of the things that Cheryl Bazak always kind of presents is the return-to-class percentage of students who kind of come to the nurse for whatever reason and then return. So I'm confident that we have that data, because everything kind of gets logged in. And I know when we started that, I'm going to say mid-twenty teens, I guess, I don't know how you say that, twenty-teens. I mean, that, that return-to-class rate has incredibly gone up, which is a huge compliment to the nurses and staff.
Absolutely, yeah, for sure. I have kind of a general question, and I don't know if it's, you don't have to have an answer now, or, I'm not sure what it would look like, or if there's a way to measure, but I would be curious to see if, what the correlation is between student grades and their performance on MCAS and their growth, and then somewhere in there, their MAP, right? Like, how does it, does MAP and MCAS correlate? Is MAP an indicator? Because I feel like all districts have a different district-wide assessment. And yes, they're linked to the standards, and yes, MCAS is linked to the standards. But it's, it's not, it's, it doesn't always line up, so I would like, is there a way to have that shown?
We pulled some data, MAP also has, they, they have looked at state data, because they have communities within Massachusetts that has shared that, that data blind. And they have a predictor because of the, the data that they have collected, they can actually predict. So on those student reports for students in grades three through eight, it actually shows what, what students, based on their score this fall, what they would predict. And we're finding that the trends, you know, even again, those like dips in third and fifth would also are holding true in MAP data as well.
That's good.
Yeah, so that's in the parent report that went home. If you have a student in those grades, it will tell you whether or not, what the indication is in terms of MCAS, and that's good for our principals to know as well.
Yeah, I saw the envelope as I was leaving.
You did have K on MCAS, did you not try to start on that?
When we went to MAP data a few, a few years back, one of the biggest reasons we went to it right prior to MCAS changing is because they have a forty-five-year history, NWEA, which is the MAP, and they had a really strong correlation to the MCAS. Now, the MCAS has all been readjusted, as you recall. The state went to PARK, along with forty-six other states. Districts could do PARK as a trial, and they'd be held harmless. And so we stuck, we stayed with the MCAS, but we were only about eighteen or nineteen percent of all the schools in the state stayed with MCAS. And then we had the new MCAS test that was rolled out called, they ditched PARK, and it was called. and it was called Next Generation MCAS 2.0. And some would argue, some would argue that it was, you know, that test needed, you know, that, that, that's being still referenced and normed as they go along. Because the first administration, the first rail administration was 2019, I'd say. And then we had COVID. So like, the kids in, the kids who took the 10th grade test, was it last year? Hadn't taken a full MCAS test since 7th grade. And so that will do that. And I think MAP is still a really good predictor, but they'll make adjustments too and get it more in line.
Sorry, so not, do all school districts then take MCAS? Because you said we stuck with it, so does that mean?
So it, you might not, I don't know if you recall, but there was a push for what was called to go from what was called the legacy MCAS test to a test called PARCC. And PARCC was a big push nationwide. I think it was up to, it might have been 40-something states at one point were going to go all-in in PARCC. So they were piloting PARCC here in Massachusetts with the full plan to adopt it.
As a national plan?
Well, as a state plan.
Okay.
But it was a national trend.
Some part of a national, correct.
A national trend. So under the federal law, every state is, like, you can't compare state to state because all states are required under the federal law is to have an assessment tool. And they report out on it. So what happened is districts in Massachusetts, a lot of them jumped on, we're going to end up with PARCC. Let's stick with PARCC. Let's try, let's pilot PARCC. And in addition, like, they're going to hold you harmless. Like, there's no accountability, there's no, you know, you're trying something new. And my only point being, I think to the best of my recollection, the three years that everyone was trying PARCC, we stayed with MCAS. That's what the decision that we made as a district. And, but, those MCAS scores are hard to even compare those years a little bit because only, out of all the schools in Massachusetts, only about 20% in those years stayed with the MCAS. The rest were off piloting PARCC, which then got dumped.
So are, what, are all the districts back on MCAS?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, yes, thank you.
It wasn't a full data set when we had the option for PARCC?
That's what, yeah.
I don't, maybe that was too much, but. I know there are people at home.
The answer is yes.
So is it correct to interpret that by saying that, like, during those years, right? The MCAS was less, was less utilized. So the comparison data against the state is less valuable, right? During that interval of time?
It's actually, I think it was more, in some ways more valuable because the, most of the districts that stayed with it were the high, a lot of high-performing districts that we were being, like, kind of lumped in with because they were sticking with it. And, you know, not surprisingly, you know, districts that have more challenges and, and a whole, you know, different places that were said, you know, were held harmless, you know, went that route.
Gotcha, okay.
Oh, sorry, I just have two more quick questions. Because I don't see, and I would be remiss if I didn't ask about ML as a subgroup and what their performance is. And do you have, because I think that also can drive your, you know, your PD as well. And I know that your ML population is not as large as some communities, but it's my area, so I'm going to ask. And do you have any duly identified students who are, who are special education students?
Those would be students that form high needs, so high needs students could be duly.
But, but high needs is a, is a bigger umbrella. I'm like specifically asking for ML and IEP students, like, if they're duly identified. And you may not have them, I'm not sure. I know it's a, it's kind of a new issue.
In many of our schools, I think our 3-8, we have the ML subgroup in, trying to think of which categories. I've looked at too many charts and numbers. High school, we do not have a high enough population for data there. And then so across the different schools, there's, there are some schools that have some high enough population to deem a subgroup, but it is, yes, not across the board. So we don't have it for, for.
All of them, got it, okay, that makes sense. And then, do we have any families or students that opt out of MCAS? Do we, and you don't have to answer that now. And then what is the policy if it's high school? Because they can't, I mean, it can opt out.
So they can't opt out of MCAS. So they can, they can't. The, Desi will tell you, you can't opt out of MCAS. They can instruct their child not to take the MCAS test, but we will present the MCAS test. Well, I mean, I obviously, I will consult with the superintendent, but my recommendation would be that we would present the MCAS test to the student if they choose not to take it. And so then we would, you know, we were recorded as that, the child did not take that MCAS.
So the high school test, that's the competency determination, okay? You have, you have to pass that test to graduate from high school. Unless there is a different path, like an alt, MCAS alt, you know, type thing.
But an alt doesn't give you graduation. It doesn't give you a high school diploma, does it? If you pass your MCAS alt, do you get a high school diploma?
Yeah, because it's still an MCAS assessment.
It's still an MCAS.
Now, there is, there are students that, you know, get what's called a certificate of attendance.
No, I know that.
And that's a little different. But what I wanted to say, and I'll get back to the original question to keep it short, is. Yeah, so, you know, most districts, I mean, all districts, there was no opting out. The state would say there's no opting out.
Apologies, I thought you could opt out.
Desi kind of, they haven't lessened that a little, they've lessened it a little bit. There is still no opt-out, but they do, they have put out things to us saying, look, we know there are some families that are going to come, they're not going to take the test. You know, and Ms. Lethrup, a very diligent principal over there in South, in Andover, you know, probably presented that exam. Because if you don't take the exam, it just counts as a zero. There's no, it's like, you know, you don't take the test, it counts towards your accountability. Now, there is that belief because when I was Assistant Superintendent, like, there was different years, ebbs and flows, where someone would get an online, like, letter that looks official, that says, I'm officially opting my child out of MCAS. You fill the name in, and I get them and I call them. It's going to really impact the school because it really impacts schools when they don't take MCAS exams because kids at Kittredge or Thompson or even Atkinson, there's only three, say, there's three classes at the Atkinson School. There's 60 students total.
Right.
A couple of kids could really skew the scores. So I will say there's a big push, as you guys have seen in the paper, for, they're trying to get a ballot question to end MCAS. And, you know, there are some committees, you probably have even seen it, that they take a stand on it. So it, it's a big issue.
Yeah, I didn't mean to, like, drop it into that. I honestly thought that you could and I was just curious if we had families that did.
I think our participation rate is, again, I know a couple of cases where our students were absent and, you know, extended absence. But I think we're in the 99 to 100% participation rate.
Okay, any others?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. One, you know, I always think MCAS is just one test, right? It's one piece of data that's there. On the other hand, right, it's a really good litmus test in terms of where we sit in the state. And I don't necessarily think, like, how we necessarily do this year is like the end-all, be-all. What I really like to see is, you know, the student growth percentile and kind of where that is, right? Because that cohort could just be, you know, challenging or, you know, you know, have some difficulties. But are they learning and are they continuing to grow with that? I think it is really kind of the key thing. So I think the presentation was good. I mean, I think I have some additional questions that I really kind of want to dive into. I won't do that entirely tonight. But one of the things that I, I think is, and I think it's slide 24. It's the one on accountability and percentages towards the targets. We have two schools, two elementary schools that are 14 to 20% lower than the other schools. And so I'm just curious about what do we need to support students and staff in order to help them? I mean, if it were, I'm just making this up, 73, 72, right? You'd say, you know, that, that could be one student who's absent, right? But when we have that big of a difference, what do they need as we start to hit some budget things in order to help them succeed? You don't have to answer that right now. And then I know that you, I'm pretty sure you guys have the ability to kind of dive into the types of questions that maybe we don't do really well on. And I know you've got some great professional development that's here. But I hope that that really is paired to the type of instruct. I don't really mean to say the type of instruct, the instructional needs that we have out there. And, you know, is it fractions, right? Like, I'm just making this up, but like, did 5th grade just really do poorly on fractions? And do we need to do something different in order to help them with that? Or, you know, reading comprehension or, you know, whatever that data is so that, you know, the PD that we're able to provide is real and it's impactful? And again, it's just for this one test, but, you know, I swore I was never going to use fractions again when I, but, you know, I use them all the time, right? And so those are the type of things that I, I think, you know, look at where we've got the holes to figure out how we kind of do.
Right, and that work comes from that item analysis. So that's that drill down that we'll do as both district leaders. You know, Dr. Gilligan will do with the principal group as well as the principals will do with their grade levels in their schoolhouse. That's when you can really drill down and take a look. And you're absolutely right. Sometimes what we find is that it is exposure to the curriculum. So perhaps students are being tested on something that they haven't been taught yet. And so sometimes, you know, it's looking at how you might tweak that a little bit in terms of making sure that curriculum is taught to the student. Other things that we will be looking at, that I've started to look at, and I know some of the principals have as well, is our open response. And that we, you know, are not receiving the amount of points that we believe our students are capable. So what we're seeing in our students' daily work and what we're seeing in their response to other kinds of comprehension work is not matching the scores that we're seeing on the MCAS. And so there are some really direct teaching things that we can do in order to help our students do the best they can in that area.
Okay. And I guess my last point is, obviously, you're, you're new to the district. And so, you know, with that comes the ability to say, you know,
I'm new.
I'm new and there's a new way to do things, right? Just because we've done it one way for a long time does not mean it's the way that we need to continue to do that. So I would challenge you to challenge status quo, even with Dr. Gilligan. And, you know, what new ideas do you have and new strategy to kind of do this? And I think it's always fantastic when we have somebody who comes from a different district because you've seen different things and you know and understand kind of what works and just little ways of do that. And so I challenge you to just, you know, continue to use your resources and your skills and your expertise to, to help push all of this, and I know you will.
Yeah, that is our plan and that is, I think, you know, you see in some of the professional development. It's why we may not have planned on doing a reboot of foundations, but it's why we're retraining everybody in foundations. I do really believe that bringing, taking on, bringing M-Class, upgrading our DIBELS system is going to, we're going to see some great results from that work. But, you know, continuing to meet as a leadership team and I, you know, that's my job and I'm happy to do it.
I'm psyched you're here.
Mr. McDowd, I'd say this, what I'm excited about hiring Ms. Lethrup is, that's why I hired Ms. Lethrup. She has a really terrific track record and she knows what it's like dealing with of wide variety of groups. But more importantly, I think the nice part of the team is we try to empower our folks and let them go. And as much as I know about MCAS and I love talking about MCAS, I'll try to limit it tonight and keep my answers short. The, you know, this is, this is her baby and the team's working really hard. And, you know, I expect great things and continuous improvement.
I just, I just have, I'll keep it real short and quick. So looking at where we didn't see the, quite the improvement that we would have wanted to see with, I think it was like the 3rd and the 5th grade. So what are we trying to do now? And again, nothing that has to be answered now with the 4th and 6th graders to say, okay, these are where, these, we're missing some of the improvements. How can we go back and fill in some of those gaps going, with them going forward? So it's something to think about, like, again, I know we're stretched on time here. And then my other question was, when we're looking at, at these levels, you know, of, you know, are we succeeding, meeting? What's, what are we focusing on? Are we focusing on just, we just want to see overall improvement or is there a set goal?
Both. We always want to see improvement, but we want to, I mean, I think the criteria is we want to meet the expectations and then obviously we want to exceed the expectations. But really, we want every student to have some type of growth in terms of meeting their targets. So that's why I think in that first slide where we talked about, all of our subgroups had some sort of growth, whether it was typical and then some high growth, but we're looking at both.
So I was going to ask you actually about the 3rd and 5th grade too, because that jumped out at me. And I think it's interesting that it skipped a year, right? That something's strange about that, and I'm sure you're going to dig into it. But I'm curious why that, you know, like, if you can figure out why that might have happened? Like, what was magical about 4th grade that, that, you know, and then they slipped again in 5th? That seems, and I wonder if it's just an anomaly.
Yeah, and you're also, you're also comparing different cohorts of kids, right? So you could look at 2002. What's it? Third, yes.
Third grade 2002 did compared to 4th grade 2003 because that would be the same group of students. And there's, we were kind of trying to see, well, is there, you know, is this the exact pattern, the way we want to see it? And in many cases it was, but there, yeah.
But there's, there's also the factor, right? It is two different groups, you know.
It's two different groups of kids.
One year was principal at Thompson. After December, I registered 41 new students before the MCAS. And so their, their move-ins, move-outs, you know, and we've looked at this periodically over time. What we've seen is kids who are in our district, K to 12, usually continue to do well and they do well. And folks that are, when we have more transient populations in and out, you know, I know, like, for me, is, I remember once I got a kid two days before MCAS and, you know, I was like, so what have you guys been doing in this other school? It was like totally different. And if they came from another state, it was like.
It's important to look at.
Or another country.
I think that's where the item analysis will really come in to see what our curriculum is showing and are there areas that we might need to readjust.
Okay, perfect, yeah. So you take the data and work with it to, to, to target your improvement.
That was actually a good example. When you talk about transancy, traditionally, Atkinson has the highest rate. And that could fluctuate from one year to the next. So we'll look at the data and it's a possibility that when you look at, they went, they went from, had crazy improvement, right? 33, 39 to 61 and then back down to 51. But it could be that the transient rate was lower the year before than it was the following year. And that, that has a big impact.
And remember, you're comparing, we're looking again at 2019 to 2023. So while it's hard to see, you know, a dip from 61 to 51, you're still looking at 39 to 51.
Yeah, and I would just say, like, overall, if I could sum it up, like, I think it's really important, like, the MAP data, that's really for teachers to inform their instruction. And so that's giving us real-time information in that year about where kids are at. And we have to meet them where they're at. And then it allows us then to do what we have to do, progress monitor, and then figure out, are we making the progress or not? And some will, some won't, and then what do we do about it? And then as you look at the MCAS, it is a good task, like, it's a good snapshot in time. And, you know, the crazy thing about MCAS is you take it in the spring and it comes out in the fall of the following year. So, but it is good over time, right? It gives you good information in a lot of different areas. But the, the MAP testing is more like, you know, it's more of a formative assessment in the time. It's like going to your doctor for your checkup, right? Like, I go, they take your height, weight, blood pressure, you know, and oftentimes the MCAS is compared to like an autopsy, right? Like, you take it at the end of the year, then you get results sent to you the next year. It's a different cohort of kids, right? And then you're getting it, these results in October and they're taking the test again. So it's a combination of taking that along with the other assessments and triangulating, using all that data to find out how do we best inform our instruction. And to Andrew's point and to Pam's point, you know, when we look at the standards, right? And we see something off, like, this grade was lower at one school versus the other or even within the same school, that's when you go to the item analysis. Sometimes the item analysis might be one question in that area only and it's a bad question. But oftentimes, if the, where there's smoke, there's fire. And so when you peel that back and you go to the item analysis, now you say, okay, well, that's why we have collaboration. Not only like in school teams, but sometimes the ability across the district. And if there's someone, if, if Mr. Mealy is doing a great job teaching fractions and Mr. Gilligan is not, then I want to find out what is Mr. Mealy doing so he can share that best practice. And that's the, the kind of work that's really important about collaboration, about what to look for, about how to use the data. And so I'll leave it at that.
All right, no more questions. Thank you very much for coming and for sharing this and answering all our questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. That was part A.
Yeah, I'm going to be quick here. Yeah, I'm going to be quick here. Actually, part of it I'm going to ask, Mr. McDevitt, do you mind talking about the next one?
Yeah, sure, I'll take a couple minutes of their slides. There's a couple pictures, right? Mostly pictures, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I think it was last week, last, I can't remember, the 25th, the 26th? Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday, yeah.
We had celebrating teacher night at the North Andover High School. We welcomed 23 teachers from the ABEC all the way to the high school who achieved their professional teacher status, which was great. I think almost all the principals were there to welcome and congratulate them, so that was, that was great. And then, oh, that's a bad picture of me.
Did you see the previous one of Dr. Gilligan?
Who took these pictures?
That is fantastic and it needs to meet whatever profile picture you use.
That's a good picture, I like it.
But the highlight of the night was really two Hall of Fame nominees, or inductees, I should say. And so I was going to do Anthony Reynolds first, did I skip him? Nope, there he is, okay. So Mr. Reynolds was inducted in, I believe he started teaching in 1966, retired in, I believe, 97 or so. Unfortunately, he passed away in the fall of 2021. His wife and his daughter were there. The prior honorary or inductee, Mary Gregoire, was there to kind of speak on behalf of him. And so that was a really great celebration for him. Our second was Judy Negrelli, and she had Bill Smith and Pat McGreevy, who was here about two weeks or so ago. They both spoke about the impact that she had with students and them professionally. They were absolutely hysterical and they, they welcomed her into the Hall of Fame as well. So really a nice special night for, for all of them. And it was good to kind of see the community come together and celebrate them, so I thought it was a lot of fun.
Mr. Mealy, if you go back to the plaque and, you know, their families each got, I think, do they call that a Paul Revere Silver Bowl? In our case, it might be stainless steel, but along the same lines. But most importantly, and this is the most impactful thing that happens, is that plaque of Anthony Reynolds and the one for Judy Negrelli will be posted outside of one of the English classrooms and one of the special education classrooms at the middle school and the high school respectively. And it will be there in perpetuity.
And I think I said it at the Hall of Fame, but I still believe we are the only community in the state that has an educator Hall of Fame. We very often honor alumni, we honor student athletes, but I don't think anybody but North Andover honors our, our retired educators.
And I think it's really great that we celebrate our teachers who have achieved professional status. I don't think that's pretty, I don't think that's very common in the state as well, to have that recognition for them and that celebration.
There were 20, 23, right? 23, I believe, yeah.
And we had, we had good attendance, I mean, some of them were at second jobs or coaching. But the pride in which they, you know, you could see it on their families' faces that came with them and to recognize them is special. But it's also really cool, to Mr. McDevitt's point about the Hall of Famers, there were some Hall of Famers in the audience as well. And, you know, I'd say that former Hall of Famer, Mary Julie Gregoire from North Andover High School, like, her speech about Anthony Reynolds.
Almost had me in tears.
But the kind of teacher is, you know, we, oftentimes people say, don't look back or just look ahead and, you know, and the ability to look back at the past and what was excellent then that set some of these benchmarks and looking forward of folks who have earned professional status, it's, it's, it's really good for the town.
It's a nice tie together.
For the two honorees, it was, the stories were fabulous and they were not only appreciated stories from, from students, but stories from colleagues. Striking to me that, that, how, how much of an impact they had on their colleagues.
Yep, all right, so we have our next North Andover Parent Resource Network. Just a shout out to Lisa Roberts, for those who don't know, she does a tremendous job coordinating this. And so November 16th at 7:00 PM at the North Andover High School Auditorium, there'll be plenty of seating. They, please, they'll have a panel called Ask the Expert. And they can come and ask any question about social, emotional learning, mental health, occupational therapy. And you can also, there will be, you know, on, on Twitter, the district Facebook. We have, you can submit a question anonymously too, like, if you want to go and not, you know, ask a question that you may not want to say in front of others. And present will have Michelle O'Leary, she is the district-wide director of SEL, who you met, I think it was at last time or two times ago? Yep, we'll have Lou Fahey, she's a district-wide occupational therapist. Jillian Conley, one of our school counselors from Sargent. Lindsay Chatterdon, the school psychologist from NAMS. Tom DiStefano, adjustment counselor up at North Andover High School. And Maureen Ryan, who runs our, along with Heidi Waters, our Understanding Our Differences program. And so that will, that should be a terrific event. Just a reminder that it is now officially November, today's, what, the 2nd? It's going by quick. And so we have our North Andover CPAC Awareness Day, will be November 17th. You know, you'll be getting a lot, probably more information from that. Last year was a tremendous event, they took over High Street and it was, it was awesome. And so, you know, you'll get more, there'll be more stuff promoted about that as well. And that's the CPAC awareness.
I will add, I think they're doing it over now by Cookie Monster. So they think they have a room over there that's going to be set up and they're getting some businesses over there to participate. So since High Street is down, it's moved over to that part of town.
Which is, where's that exactly?
By like Jade.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Talbot's, Time, Chipotle.
Time, that's what I meant, Jade, Time.
Jade's on High Street.
Yeah, yeah, Time, so Time, I think, yeah.
Oh, oh, that area, oh, okay, okay.
Be Good.
Yeah.
Do you know what, what time that is? Do you remember?
I don't know the time off the top of my head, but, yeah.
We find out before the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll find out. And that's right, you know, I think they were finalizing it, but at the PTO president's meeting, I meet with them every month. The president of the CPAC was there and they were talking about it, because Cookie Monster stands out because I, I want to get one of those. I haven't had one yet.
I see what motivates the superintendent.
Yes, and just, you know, two last things, just happenings that I forgot, I just want to mention. November 9th, a lot of our schools celebrate Veterans Day. As you know, we're off on the 10th with Veterans Day being on Saturday this year. But, you know, the Thompson School is having their annual salute to veterans. And every year, we, a veteran is selected and I have the privilege of presenting the award. You know, starting, I started the event way back when, in 2008. But this year, we're going to recognize the former fire chief here in North Andover, his name's Bill Dolan, Chief Dolan. And I had no idea that Chief Dolan was a decorated veteran from Vietnam. That rather than be drafted out of North Andover High School, he enlisted. And then he re-upped voluntarily for two additional tours. And so I learned that last year at the Vietnam Memorial, at the 50th anniversary, the evacuation of the last troops. And this event, and the events that happen all over our district, it's really important when we talk about service and we talk about our raised values, you know, remembering the sacrifices that our folks here in this community, and there's many of them around, made for our freedom. So that will be Bill Dolan and that is taking place on the 9th, and it's quite an event. And then last but not least, this is going to be the hottest item of the night. Dr. Mealy and I had our first official podcast, Night Side, Dr. Gilligan and Dr. Mealy. We had the best first guest of all time, a one Benjamin Abbott. And we recorded it yesterday and the newsletter's supposed to go out tomorrow, but we're waiting for NACAM to get it to us. Because we want to link it in and it talks about all things North Andover. We, our guest gets to present, like, from their perspective, you know, different aspects of their experiences here in the northern public schools, and then we wrap up with some current happenings. So, Dr. Mealy, any commentary?
Ben was a great first guest, absolutely.
He was the star of the show for sure.
Definitely.
And if Dr. Mealy can just pick the intro music, I think we'll get that linked tomorrow.
That's my job right now.
Did you guys do sound effects and everything?
He was trying, he had one that sounded like the Twilight Zone.
No, we didn't do.
He was looking for the applause one for every time he spoke.
No, that was the time before, that was the time before.
I, I have some old records, I have sound effects records filled with that stuff if you want to borrow. You can find a place to play them.
It's a color code and I think I know most of them, but I was like one off and they're not labeled, so I have a little chart now for next time.
Dr. Gilligan, would it make sense to invite, there were a few students who presented at our last meeting and they were working on raising flags and showing more patriotism in town.
I, I, so that's an interesting question, I thought of this, did they say they're in the Scouts, Eagle Scout?
I think that, yeah.
I think they raised the flag at this event.
Are they going to be there already?
I think they do, we can check.
I just thought maybe it would be nice to invite them since that was their civics project and they were really passionate about it.
Great idea, we'll, we'll follow up on that for sure.
Okay. That's it for the superintendent's report?
Affirmative.
Very good, okay, Chair's report. First thing we have are proposed dates for our meetings, January through June. And that's in the packet here.
Are we going to meet on the Wednesday and Thursday? So the first two?
In December.
In December.
We typically do the tri-board and then.
I know we do the tri-board, but I can't remember if we.
So, I'll tell you, I would not be upset if December 14th didn't happen, it's my birthday and I'm getting a new knee.
December 14th is the tri-board?
No, the 13th.
No, the 13th is the tri-board.
The 14th is the.
And the 14th is our regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
I just, I can't remember, I don't remember last year if we did back-to-back like that.
I think we did do back-to-back.
We did.
You did?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I, I probably am not going to make it on the 14th.
Sounds like not.
So what other dates do we have? Because we've got, what is it, the 16th, 16th of November? And then if we, we've got to have something in early December.
Let's see, I got them in here.
Should be this.
If I.
It's in November this month.
Okay. Two, 16 and 30th.
Okay.
Sometimes times up like that.
All right.
And then, then after the 30th, the next one is, the next, well, there'd be the tri-board meeting, but then the 14th.
Unless you want it to do.
We probably need to do something in December, but.
We have the 13th and 14th, are you saying do this, like, the 7th and 13th?
I, I think we should look at the calendars, I mean, if we, if we did the 14th, you know, the following week's 21st, I don't think that that's, that's a good.
Friendly.
Date, I actually think there may be a religious holiday in there.
It would have to be the, or the week of the 7th, it doesn't have to be on Thursday, right?
Yeah, or maybe.
Was there a problem with this, well, I've met the Thursday before, the 30th, we've met one week earlier. We have one on November 30th, which is almost December 1st.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, I, I think as we're getting ready for budget to kind of.
Well, I, I would appreciate being on the 7th because I know I can't be there the 14th, so.
But I don't think you're saying to replace the 14th, are you?
Oh, you're saying just to add one?
If we replace the 14th, which is what I thought you asked for, then I think we need to add a meeting in there.
But are you saying, should we add one either way? Or just?
If, if, if we remove the 14th.
We should definitely add one.
We should have one, because otherwise we're going to have, we will not have any meeting in December. Sometimes we need to approve something for a budget purpose.
Yeah, yeah, I thought you meant to add one in addition to.
No.
We typically don't have three in November, it's typically two in November, two in December.
Right.
So can, can, are the three of you anyway good with the 7th?
We'll have to look at calendars.
All right, so we can.
Because that date just.
Maybe have Michelle survey us?
You're saying the 7th instead of the 14th?
Instead of the 14th?
So Hanukkah starts on the 8th and 9th.
Oh, it's the 8th, I was thinking it was later.
Hanukkah's the 7th, isn't it?
It starts the night before.
So it starts sundown the night before.
Which is the 7th.
Which would be the 7th, so that's off. I was thinking it was the 21st. Okay, let's look at some calendars on that.
Okay.
Because it could be that, another day that week.
Okay, all right, well, ask Michelle to survey us about other days that week, the week of December 4th. Besides Thursday. Okay. Yeah, Hanukkah is not at this level of, of some of the other holidays, so although it's probably better to avoid that night for that reason, yeah, you're right.
And then we have back-to-back in January 11th and the 18th.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
We always have the public hearing a week after the presentation.
Yep. I mean, I know you know you're right, sorry, I'm just processing.
So we, so.
It's been a long day.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so this is just a discussion, we don't need to vote on this, do we?
No.
I'm just adding them furiously to my calendar, so I don't.
We just try to get these so that we can publish them.
Right, of course, yeah, okay. All right, next, the community chat is beginning this Saturday and it will be myself and Ms. Petrowski, Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So that we don't have two members of the negotiation subcommittee there simultaneously.
I'm also out of state.
And you're also out of state, so that won't help, I mean, that means you can make it anyway. So it'll be Pam and me at 12:30 at the library.
Library.
Yep, and then the other dates are, as we previously said, there's one in March and one in June.
So I have to go back and look again, because I had this weekend in my calendar originally.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, in this state, right? But did I, but was I, was I supposed to go to a different one? It doesn't matter.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out, I mean, I think.
Again, I'm sorry.
Jury duty, once you've done one, that is.
I know, I apologize for processing aloud, I'm sorry.
I only have the March dates written here, I don't have who did.
Don't worry about it, it's fine, we'll figure it out. Sorry.
We'll, we'll re-coordinate with Michelle.
Yep.
But anyway, we're, we're there this Saturday. Okay, and then the last thing, I just briefly mentioned that Dr. Gilligan and I attended the, speaking of veterans, the memorial service for Sean Gallagher, for whom Gallagher Field is named. And that was a really moving ceremony and, you know, Selectman Valicourt was a classmate of his and, you know, so really knew, knew Sean well. His family was there, it was a very nice tribute. And I was glad to be there and represent us.
Yeah, his brother was also there, Michael Gallagher, and they graduated the same year together. And they just, six of them all grew up on Russell Street over there behind Sal's, formerly Sal's. And, but it was really glad you could go, Che Brown.
Yeah, he, he made the ultimate sacrifice, right? He was one of the people in Beirut when that horrible ambush happened, so. Anyway, that concludes the Chair's report. So we'll move to school building committee updates. First, middle school, I know that, you take that one on? Please, Dr. Mealy.
So I, I found a spot about halfway up the driveway coming out of ABECC that has a marker on it. And I stand there, probably every other day, and take pictures so I can kind of track the progress of the project. So I'll have those.
Oh, cool.
Yep. But the foundations have been poured, they're really going to town now, so you can, if you look over the fence or as you're driving by, you drop off a pickup, you can look through the gate there and you can see a lot happening. So we're moving right along.
Excellent. And then Ms. Kittredge?
I don't have anything new to add, I think we're.
Nothing new since the last one.
We signed with the OPM already, right? Or we selected one?
No, we are scheduled to go to the MSBA for their board to approve our selection of our OPM.
Oh, and then you sign.
Our OPM has to present, they've done many MSBA projects in the past, so they know what to do. But they have to present and they have to get approved.
Okay.
Until that, there's nothing.
Okay.
No next steps.
All right. Old business, we have second read and vote on overnight trip to Costa Rica.
So I'll move that the committee approve the trip as presented in the packet.
Second.
Any discussion? No, okay, we'll vote, Mr. McDevitt.
Yes.
Ms. Conig.
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that's approved, should I gavel? Approved. And then the next item is second read and vote, Andover, North Andover Winter Guard. MOA.
In our packets, we have the Yellowstone trip, is that not on the agenda?
MOA?
It's fine, I mean, we, we won't vote on it tonight, but.
I think, is that the one that we tabled, not tabled, but we.
It's Yellowstone.
Where is it?
I don't see it. Oh, here it is, yep, yep.
Aren't they doing the Costa Rica in place of Yellowstone? Don't they say they normally do Yellowstone and they're doing Costa Rica?
Unless it's.
Oh, so it could be a typo from.
That has been made to Yellowstone in the past.
Okay, you know what, all right. It's the way the pages went, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's the third page of that one, is what it is.
It looked like a new motion, all right, sorry.
All right.
I was thinking they'd already gone, so.
So can someone make a motion for the MOA?
I'll move to approve the proposed Color Guard MOA between North Andover and South Andover.
South Andover. I know, I know. Don't you love it when you talk to people who are not from around here and you have to explain all that, like? Any discussion? Do we have a motion and a second? I didn't hear the second, so, okay.
No, it's a great program.
Yep, absolutely, so we'll go the other way this time, Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Conig?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, the chair votes yes, and that passes. Okay, new business, we have our first read of budget directives, which is here.
So at the, in our agenda meeting, I work with Chair Brown and Mr. Hicks, these were the budget directives last year, and it gives everyone opportunity to review what they were last year, and consider what maybe be some of those budget directives as we move forward with budget season coming up.
So I think one thing that I would like to see, I know last year, not last year, last week, Dr. Mealy presented our enrollment numbers. But can you present the average class size by school? I know we, we have done that. One of the things that, as we've looked to build Kittredge and the middle school, that we've really used as a bargaining tool is where we have exceeded class size, to try to work with the Facilities Master Plan 2 to continue to decrease these, and I'd like to just be sure from a projection perspective that we are still as low as we can be with these. 18 to 22 for K to 2, you know, I, I'm a firm believer in small class sizes, and I'd be curious to see what we can do in 3 to 5. I think those are just absolutely critical years, those elementary years to kind of get that foundation in, so if it makes sense, I think we should look to lower. So, take a look at the numbers.
We'll have them.
I know, I know you have them, just.
No, I said we'll have them.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
For next, when we get the second read, any other comments?
So one thing I, I kind of, I would like to see is some type of wording or some type, something around increasing the compensation and benefits plan to our, our staff and faculty, namely teachers, some type of budget directive toward that. So I don't know if that's something that can be added?
We did have that discussion, if you look at the first bullet, retain and/or add necessary teaching positions, so it could be something that you could add some language to that.
Okay, yeah, if we could add something around, around that.
That's, that's where the ad came from, was I had that discuss, we had that discussion in, in our agenda planning meeting.
Yeah, let's add a little bit more language to that, just to make it clear.
Anything else? Pam?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that was, that was my comment before anyway, so I don't have anything in addition, although, although it's interesting to note, right, that the class 3, you know, we heard tonight about class, sorry, grades 3 and grades 5 having some small challenges, so perhaps reducing class sizes there would be good. You know, I don't know, it's something to think about. Yeah, rest of it.
Can they get the feedback to you or Michelle?
Yeah. Yeah, that would probably be the best way to do it, if you email me and Michelle specifically what you'd like to see here. Okay, I think that's it. Public comment?
I actually have one small thing.
Under new business, yeah.
No, it's under public comment.
Oh, okay.
Nope. So Ms. Petrowski kind of mentioned the students who came and presented for Mr. McGreevy and a slick pro, but I think it was two years ago, the students who are currently.
Sophomores.
Sophomores today, were in Mr. McGreevy's class, and one of the things that they were advocating for was feminine products at, I would assume probably all, all levels of the school, and I believe that the state has passed that bill. I think it was last, maybe like Thursday or Friday, that it did pass. So I, I did share that with Mr. McGreevy, I don't know if he'll kind of come back and present that, but he was gonna share that with the students as well, and I just think it's a testament to the, the contributions that these students make and what an asset the class is. So, I'm not saying they were the founders of the bill, but I know that it weighs in as well as, as future constituents, so.
We'll see, another student talked about the water bubblers.
Yeah.
And direct result, I think Christina Minikuchi was involved, but we got airmark money, and we've replaced seven or eight because of the funds that were raised as a result of his project.
Wow, yeah, that's great, that's really cool, that it's a cause and effect thing, you can really see it.
Can we highlight that in the nightly news?
I did, actually, I didn't specifically mention the, the water bubblers, but I, but I did say that in the one I just put out, it'll come out tomorrow, whenever, I did, I devoted quite a lot of space to the, to the slick pros.
But I mean, specifically to these things that have, I mean, that's, that's real change happening in the.
That can be a separate section, it doesn't have to be.
I think we have the article, it might just be a refresh, because if I recall, I think they, like, secure it, I think it was, was it, $65,000, Jim? That sounds high.
It was $25,000.
$25,000.
For the, for the, for the water bubblers, you're saying?
Yeah, but the students, the student, like, this was the project, and can you imagine being in 8th grade?
No, I, I stand corrected, I think it was 22 payments of $25,000, so $50,000 total.
Wow, that is amazing.
And they've gotten charging stations.
Can we put their names on, like, above them or something?
The water bottle?
We're gonna have to have a Mr. McGreevy Hall of Fame.
That's big change, you know?
I did mention the two articles at town meeting in my, in my column, though, that, that they got two articles at town meeting, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And don't forget about the Exonerated Witch, and that was Mrs. McGreevy.
Right. You can tell we're from, specifically Massachusetts, because we refer to them as water bubblers, not water fountains.
Yes, where I grew up, they were water fountains.
Yes.
But I've lived here long enough now that I call them bubblers. So, so is that, well, if it doesn't get in this nightly news, we can do it in the next one, you know, the specifics.
I just feel like that deserves a big recognition.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's huge.
I wrote about it in my nightly.
Oh, there you go, all right.
Great.
Okay. All right, any other public comment? I don't see any public, so guess no public comment.
I have to adjourn.
Very good.
A second.
All right. Back to this way, Mr. McDevitt?
I say yes.
What's that?
Yes.[1736.81]